...in the calendar, so these improvement measures, I believe would help us stop the ever increasing price inflation. However, the price inflation, when if you want to curb it, many reforms are underway. But daily consumable goods, their supply, and also the market system, there are many problems still on the ground. And this is creating heavy pressure on the community. And this might be continuing, especially the price increment in pastoral areas, especially low income parts of our citizens. It's incurring a heavy toll on our people. Therefore, the price increment in our country is really damaging the pastoralists and also the heavy influences. So what are we thinking of curbing this trend, stopping this trend? Thank you. Honorable Shambor Jambor, Smamam.
Thank you, Honorable Speaker. And also thank Your Excellency the Prime Minister for being here to respond to our question. My question, in our country, in order to ensure peace and rule of law, the government is taking measures in a very responsible way to stop attacks from within and also from without. Without, and the government is given mature leadership. And also in the diplomatic work, a lot of good work is underway. I'm grateful for that. First, by way of strengthening our security and army, so that it would increase our logistics, armaments need to be modernized if they are in the long term also. So that would make use of our natural resources. Our neighbors have been making use of our resource. Now that we are building the Renaissance Dam to make use of our own resources, they're insisting that they want to use it for themselves. And they are applying diplomatic pressure and also conducting military trainings in our neighboring countries. Egypt has done a lot to pose a danger on our country. So in order to build a modern society, a modern army, sorry. So is the budget enough to forge a modern army in order to protect our national integrity and also handle internal issues? We need to strengthen ourselves. So the security forces, the defense forces and the police in order to modernize this. I think the budget is too small, if you would elaborate on that. And secondly, in our country, for the last 30 years, hate, information, anti-democratic trends, corruption has been rampant. So the government is engaged in a lot of work to curb these evil trends. However, in various parts of our country, there are displacements, loss of lives and property. And still with several problems by way of ensuring the rule of law. The government has designated Woyan and Shani as terrorists. And as a result of the good work done by the government, peace is reigning more and more in the country. But some places have suffered a lot. So in order to help them and reinstitute them, what's the budget that is allotted for these? Thank you. Honorable Wazirat Al-Mahmoud. Thank you, Honorable Speaker. And also want to thank the Prime Minister for being here to respond to our questions. Before moving to our question. On the sixth national election, we have planted election. We have planted trees and God has helped us and it's been successful. As the Prime Minister knows, in the past elections, the five past elections, there were things that were repeated that were full of corruption. So we've strengthened now the electoral board and come up with conditions of situation for fair and free election. And the people owned the process and lined up for hours and hours patiently, so with no pressure, they conducted free elections. So congratulations. And this did not just came to be where the Prime Minister needs to be thanked for his mature leadership and also the opposition parties. Want to thank them for standing for peace. Want to thank the people of Ethiopia for standing for peace and showing proper conduct all along. Want to thank the Ethiopian people. So in the past years, a lot of work has gone into improving our economy and come up with new economic improvements and we're doing well. And we're still going through economic growth, but there are still strong challenges that we're facing. That's loan pressure and poor export and inflation also. So Excellency Prime Minister, especially the heavy loan pressure that we have, how can we minimize that? And what are the measures in place to do that? And also, secondly, the commodity and especially the export problems and increase our export items. What are we doing to improve our export trade? And thirdly, in order to contain inflation, a lot of work has gone into that. However, the situation does not seem to be effective. And why are we failing in this regard? And if you would elaborate on that? Thank you. Wazirat Al-Mahmoud. Thank you, Honorable Speaker. And also thank Excellency the Prime Minister for being here to respond to our question. I would read my question. First of all, the government is taking a lot of measures to contain price inflation. However, the inflation is still on the increase. Your Excellency Prime Minister, what is it that you have in place that inflation would decrease in 2014? And secondly, the annual budget is given to the regions as per the budget formula. However, as you know, the budget is not, the situation on the ground, the development condition is not the same. Some do not have water, some do not have hospitals, some lack from infrastructure. So they're still carrying the sick on their backs on stages. Your Excellency Prime Minister, what measures are in place to take care of these problems on the ground so that the citizens in every region would benefit from the economic development? Thank you. Honorable Wazirat Al-Mohamed. Thank you, Honorable Speaker. Greetings. And also thank Your Excellency for being here to respond to our questions. First of all, your Excellency Prime Minister, from day one of the change, anti-peace forces that want to abort the reforms. But we've been handling it patiently with wisdom so that would ensure peace and democracy and humanity would be honored and that Ethiopia would forge ahead towards prosperity. I want to thank you for your humble leadership and hard efforts. And for the budget 2014, I have some comments and questions. 2014 federal budget in comparison with the previous budget is very unique and I believe would ensure the prosperity of Ethiopia is based on studies and their implementations, measures of implementations have been put in place to help us handle the complicated economic situation on the ground and gears toward giving solutions to problems on the increase. And budget is increased for regions also. And also for Tigray region, considering the situation on the ground and also to support that region in a strengthened manner. Better budget has been assigned. So it is in line, very considerate to the situation on the ground. My questions on the budget here. For the budget that we use to increase revenue and strengthen our economy is important, considering this truth among the high income, especially those that contribute more than 10% for GDP. As we know, one is tourism. And it is very helpful for our economy, those to strengthen tourism. What kind of attention is being given to tourism? And secondly, in our country, the one and big problem is that of joblessness. It has its own many reasons among the development works of the budget year. And also in every other way, what are we thinking of taking care of this problem? Thirdly, this limited resource that we have to use it properly without any corruption, channeling it through the designated purposes and also monitoring the development? If you would elaborate on that? Want to thank Honorable Speaker. I'd read my question. First of all, our country Ethiopia conducted a successful election that pleased our friends and displeased our enemies. And the people came out to make sure that Ethiopia transitions forward. I ask if possible, if we can stand up and appreciate our people for their elections. Want to thank. So the government is doing to level best to make sure that there is economic development in the country, especially coming up with homegrown economic measures. The measures are hopeful, but still the economy has many challenges. The price inflation is there now. We cannot contain it in a manner that we want to. So especially low income people and people with salaries are suffering a lot. So in order to curb this difficult situation, do you have any measures in plan? If you would plan. And in construction, the price of cement has skyrocketed and has posed a serious problem. And this also helps, sorry, damages the economy and also creates further joblessness. So what's the government thinking to take care of this problem? And second question, concerning the Renaissance Dam and also other development works are underway in our country. Some countries like Egypt are threatened by the fact that we are on the path to development. And they seem to be posing security problems in our country so that there would no more be security problems. In order to strengthen our defense force, that's very important. So defense forces and other security budget are loaded. Do you think it's sufficient? Wazirat Al-Maz. Thank you, Honorable Speaker. Want to also thank the Prime Minister for being here to respond to our questions. Before my question, I have an opinion. Our country Ethiopia, in the past three years, is undergoing reform. But so many activities from within and from without are there to abort the reform. And in this, in the midst of the situation, we conducted the sixth national election in a very unique manner, in a very democratic, peaceful manner. For those who made this a reality, for the peoples of Ethiopia and also the security forces and the media outlets, I'm grateful for them. I would pose my question. Honorable, Your Excellency Prime Minister, in this election, if your party wins and you form a government, what are you planning to tackle this high cost of life, especially to help those in the low income category? What are the measures put in place to over this? And do we know the root cause of this problem? And secondly, the Renaissance Dam, our Ethiopia is hopeful and looks forward to the development that we get out of this dam. So the second round infilling of water, what's the current situation? If you would elaborate, thank you. Next is Honorable Mrs. Jambor Nishkamfa.
Thank you very much, Honorable Chair, Honorable Prime Minister. In our country, for the first time, we have been able to have free and independent electoral board. And I would like to congratulate you for that. Moving on, the development and prosperity projects to be successful, my prayer goes with you. And I will present my questions in reading. One, our country Ethiopia, in the sector of diplomacy, is regarded as one of the pioneers. And in different continents and countries, we have more than 44 embassies and 48 consulars and assigned diplomats and is conducting several activities, especially in the past three years in the diplomacy sector. Activities conducted and recognized by the world can be mentioned. However, given the rapid changes the country wants at the moment, A, the diplomats assigned in this sector should be experienced. B, investments, technologies and foreign currency options should be attracted by these individuals. C, the demands of our people in our country should be understood by the international community. And D, communities of Ethiopia and the diaspora living abroad should make direct contributions into the country. And activities being conducted in that regard in line with the budget and human resource relatively is hard. Do you think we have registered good results in that regard, Honorable Prime Minister? If you can explain on that, Your Excellency. Different parts of our country, especially Addis Ababa and major cities, we have many citizens living on the streets. And NGOs and other organizations and people are doing their best to support them. However, their number is increasing from time to time. Your Excellency, with the respect you have to this public in general, in order to help them come out of the streets and to be successful in different sectors, there must be a national policy. And in that regard, all should contribute and support. And if you can explain or elaborate on the plans in this regard, thank you very much. Thank you. Next is Honorable Mrs. Al-Maz Masala.
Thank you, Honorable Speaker of the House, Honorable Prime Minister of the FDR E, Dr. Abi Ahmed. And thank you very much for coming here to respond to the questions we'll be raising, representing the public. Before my questions, the internal and external challenges we're facing. We first was challenged by great decision-making of yourself. You have contributed to raise our name in front of the world. And I would like to give my appreciation to you for that. We support, I support the 2021, 2022 budget. And since I support it, I will raise a few questions or matters. I believe elaborations should be given. One, Honorable Prime Minister, from the time you begin leading the reform government, which is three years ago, several sectoral changes, transformations took place and conducted and made sure impressive activities are implemented. For example, in the agriculture sector, from the beginning, you have allocated large amount of budget for irrigation and also conducted activities to replace the wheat we import from abroad and gave support for the sector. And agricultural mechanization machineries were previously levied with high taxes. And you helped remove those barriers. And you deserve honor for that. However, farmers, pastoralists and community members and the private sector financial support is not up to the level it's expected to be. And to furnish free and fair allocation of budget and financial resources, what is planned? And in order to support the agriculture sector, is there not a way to have a dedicated financial supply or institution? Two, in the 10-year perspective plan and roadmap in order to ensure national prosperity, multi-sectoral developmental activities are to be conducted. There are sectors that we have not been able to adequately utilize. And those sectors will be given attention. And I congratulate you for that. From among that, tourism sector is one of them. Our country Ethiopia has natural beautiful biodiversity. And if we can do a little bit on that, it can make it an attraction for tourism. But however, we didn't use this resource properly. Honorable Prime Minister, in the short time you had, if I look at the activities you conducted in that sector only, I can see how you can be able to transform that sector. Therefore, on top of the existing, the natural existing parks, we have our, the Babyle Natural Forest and so on, deserve protection so that they can be attraction for tourism in full capacity. And for that, what is expected to be done? And the organizational structure of the sector is not centralized. And the organization or structure of the sector is not centralized. So if there is a plan on that as well, I would wish for you to explain. Thank you. Thank you very much. Next is Honorable Mr. Doggis Ogona.
Thank you very much, Honorable Speaker of the House, Honorable Prime Minister. Thank you for coming here to respond to our questions. I will forward my questions as follows, as following. In the past three years, under your administration, remarkable achievements registered following struggle. The two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two budget of the federal government is important for social and prosperity journey and focused on major areas, and I would like to extend my appreciation for that. And I believe God will help us with that. Honorable Prime Minister, beginning from the two thousand nineteen budget year, your government was supporting the poor and was trying to bring down the cost of goods to a single digit or the inflation to a single digit. However, it continued to be a challenge for the livelihood of citizens. The rate of inflation that has become a threat for our country, what are the policy actions you plan to take in order to reduce that? Two, the government, in order to reduce unemployment, has drafted several strategies and conducted significant activities and good results have been registered. But since we have more than fifty percent of our population to be young population and a lot of them coming out of universities and training institutions, the job opportunity created by the public institutions in the private sector will not be sufficient to employ. And because of that, several citizens are migrating to other countries and facing difficulties and atrocities. Therefore, Honorable Prime Minister, unemployment and migration that's affecting our citizens needs to be dealt with, and what are the plans provided for the coming budget year? Thank you. Thank you very much. Next is Honorable Mr. Mathios Galibo.
Thank you very much, Honorable Speaker of the House, Honorable Prime Minister of the FDR Re, Dr. Abi Ahmed. Thank you for coming here amongst us to respond to our questions, and I will raise my questions as follows. The government in different parts of our country has been trying to extend road infrastructures and was supporting different roads projects with budget and the construction, and this shall be applauded. In the coming two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two budget year, several new road construction projects and upgrading existing road infrastructure in different parts of our country is planned to be conducted as per the draft budget submitted to the House. However, in line with road construction, as it is allocated with highest budget, some road projects are delayed because of procurement and is facing challenges in implementation. For example, from Arbamnch to Consol to Jinka Road Project in the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one budget year was planned. However, it wasn't implemented. Moreover, some road projects have been initiated. However, they were not completed for so many years and were transferred to the next budget year. Also facing problems with quality and payment of compensations. For that regard, in order to solve these problems and to register better execution, what is planned? I thank you very much. Thank you very much. Next is Honorable Mr. Abdonasar.
Thank you very much, Honorable Speaker of the House. The same to Honorable Prime Minister. The completion of our national election is a historic moment, as an achievement. And on the other hand, it is a victory against internal and external forces that wished to disintegrate our country. For this success, I would like to congratulate our Prime Minister for his administration and decisions. Our government and our people has citizenry and humanity support for the people of Tegrae. And the unilateral ceasefire of the government is appropriate, and I would like to thank the government for that. And action taken, I believe, will have fruits. And I shall present my questions as follows. One, following the reform, many projects are being completed as per the time and quality designed. Out of these projects, schools by the First Lady, the Wadajenet Square and Otto and the likes can be mentioned. Therefore, Honorable Prime Minister, the federal level projects are completed rapidly, and such action should be extended to all regions. And in the construction sector, from the federal to a lower level, grassroots level, there are issues of quality and limitation of capacity and inability to complete as per the budget. So if you can elaborate on that, on what's planned for the coming year. In order to cover expenses, domestic income or revenue is important, and it's one of the major options registered. Therefore, revenue collection institutions do have capacity problems and problems on the side of taxpayers and evasion of tax that requires to be revised in order to also install modern tax collection mechanism. So what's planned in that regard? Thank you very much. Following is Honorable Mrs. Abay Gisahing.
Thank you very much, Honorable Speaker of the House, Honorable Prime Minister. Thank you for coming here to join us, to respond to our questions. I'll raise my questions in reading. The SIGS annual election was peaceful and with popular support from the public. Even though it was conducted under international and local pressure, impressive results were registered. Honorable Prime Minister, given the current situation, how do you evaluate the process of election in this regard from the side of political parties and the public in general? To maintain peace and to install real democracy, what should be done? If your party receives, receive popular vote, majority vote, what is its plan to work with other political parties? Thank you very much. Thank you. Next is Honorable Mr. Zavdu Kapata.
Thank you very much, Honorable Prime Minister. Honorable Speaker of the House, and thank you, Prime Minister, for coming amongst us to respond to our questions. I'll raise my questions as follows, as follow. As it is known, the TPLF Junta took a treacherous act against our northern defense force. And the defense force was undertaking its responsibility of law enforcement. During the law enforcement activity, the regional people faced several atrocities. And the government is trying to reinstate the people and trying to cure the challenges faced by the terrorist group. Regional governments are also showing their support. However, the challenge is complex. And because of repeated challenges being faced, it is unable to provide humanitarian support. Several international organizations and media are flagging this and blaming the government for that. Recently, the decision of the government to ceasefire was the right decision. However, the current situation of Tegrae, what is it like? And the terrorist TPLF group, if it regroups and takes the power to administer Tegrae, do you think there will be peace in the region, sustainable peace? The current situation where the people of Tegrae are not receiving humanitarian support, don't you think they will be facing several consequences? At the same time, students studying in the region are not able to come out, and many parents are worried. So what's being done in that regard as well? And going forward, what is the relationship of the region going to be with the federal government? Several, some international organizations and media are blaming the government for that. And in that regard, what is being done by the government to communicate the law enforcement activities, the proper activities of the government? Thank you very much.
Honorable Members of the Parliament, I want to thank you for questions and opinions you put forward. So I will ask His Excellency Dr. Abi Ahmed, Prime Minister, to respond to questions and opinions.
Thank you, Honorable Speaker. And also this historical Parliament, I want to thank you also, this Parliament. In comparison with the processes that other parliaments went through, this, this one is different, like in COVID. Because of COVID, this term has moved in its sixth year, into sixth year. And secondly, in the tenure of the Parliament, there's been a national change and was forced to operate in a very difficult situation. So it handled its responsibilities with a great sense of responsibility. Well, it's a parliament that carried the nation forward, it transitioned the country forward and came up, handled its duties properly. So on behalf of the Ethiopian people and their organ, the executive organ, I want to thank you sincerely. And in today's forum, we need to give, we need to give honor, or you give honor to those that deserve it. For the Ethiopian people, they deserve honor. Our defense, national defense forces, they deserve honor and thanks. So what you did in that regard is proper. I want to thank you for that also. Our entire people and also opposition, opposition parties, if they would, everyone would listen. Want them, or something that I want them to listen is the questions that were being raised today. And also, but those that have not raised up to ask questions also. Most of them, maybe with the exception of few, have not participated in the current election. So they're not saying that the party is democratic because I won, but they're saying Ethiopia won, and that's why the process is democratic. So it's not personal. Not because they have won the election personally, but they are thanking the people for conducting free and fair elections. So this Parliament, the discipline it exhibited for the past six years, and they would continue to participate in various places and contribute positively for the prosperity of the country and would make use of their experience, vast experiences. I would divide the questions into two. The first part relates with economic matters, and the second one relates to current issues. I, I think we should give priority to the economic issues for two reasons. One, most of the questions deal with economic issues. And secondly, what benefits us is to deal with our economic matter first. Each question, before going into each question, Honorable Parliament and our entire people might go back and see what we went through and also see the economic situation in a, in a balanced manner, in an emotional manner. I would want to relate some issues. One is COVID. COVID has it, not only Ethiopia, but the continent and the entire globe. Economically developed countries have been hit and challenged by this pandemic, and the economy has suffered a lot. The same with our continent. Many countries have suffered not only inflation, but their day-to-day life has been affected severely. Still forced to, to have complete lockdown two, three times in the country with a heavy toll in many respects. When you look at the situation in Ethiopia, it has been challenging. Many people have lost their lives, and COVID has been very challenging, global challenge. But in considering our condition apart from COVID, we had other locusts. Locust was also problem, as you know, at the beginning of this year when we met. The agriculture suffered a lot. The agriculture suffered a lot as a result of locust. And there was fear that hunger might come within our country. But the locust was damaging, did not actually bring about hunger. It has affected our agriculture to a certain extent. And there was also heavy rains and floods. This has caused displacements. And there was a lot of conflicts within the country that has taken toll in human life and property destruction. And also, other politicians were engaged in evil acts. As a result, many citizens, agriculturists and low-income countries have been displaced from many regions in the past years. Many delays in projects, as you know, agro-industrial parks, industrial parks, sugar parks, dams, road constructions, a lot of projects delayed for years. And they gave us economic pressures. So in order to complete these projects and come up with new projects was very challenging. But internationally, there's a high inflation. And so this international inflation has been imported in our country for, if you say, consider fertilizer. And a year or so, the price doubled. The same with benzene, fuel. Many commodities have increased, the price of commodities have increased globally. Apart from that, Ethiopians globally that have left the country, that lived in foreign countries were forced to go back to their countries. So these are heavy challenges, but we're still here. But we're still in the path of development. So the government would not say it's because of our special effort, would not be prideful. We need to see, analyze the situation. What is it that sustained Ethiopia among all these challenges? Many predicted evil, but in some ways we felt better than other countries. We need to pause and think over the reasons. This country is not only historically quite resilient. It's not really what others say, but can withstand challenges. And it's been very educational for us and also for the entire community. So Honorable Parliament, if you would encourage research in this line and find out the secret, it would be very helpful. I would be mentioning this here and there again. So these challenges helped us to forge our unity and to stand firm as a nation. And also, our creator has helped us a lot and stood with us. I see all of these as proof of the truth of this fact. So in all these challenges, when we look our economic journey, after the change in 2011, our economic development, our change was nine percent. Year after that, because of COVID, there was a heavy economic destruction, but we managed to grow by 6.1% this year. Our, we need to wait until September to know the exact figure. But indications so far show that, first of all, because of the good rains that we are experiencing, farming has been productive and there's been increase in yields. And secondly, the wheat and 15 million quintals of wheat have been produced already. And thirdly, coffee quantity and also export quality. We're aiming about 1 billion export. We're getting close there. When we look at fruits, in the past years, the projects that we started, avocado, papaya and other fruits are bearing fruit to a certain extent. Minerals, as you all know, next to coffee, we earn more than half a billion in exports. And it's showing increase. And also exports, we had issues in the past. But this year, at least, has come up with a change of 18% in the financial sector. We're going to that later. But there's been increment in project implementation, as been said earlier. The oil projects and also the new ones. Still, although there's a lot of work in hand, but there are improvements along the way. So the 2011, it's not up to 2011, but we're doing better than the 2012. And we expect to grow in a scale close to that of 2011. Indicators indicate that way. As I said earlier, the GDP per euro individual annual increment is more than 1,000. The Ethiopian GDP is more than $100 billion. And nationally, it's 2.4 trillion plus GDP. There's a lot of change. Money in the banks is more than 1 trillion. Banks and cash and also their total resource has grown to 1.9 trillion per. The growth around the banks, we still, a lot of work needs to go into, but it's very encouraging. And the trade, export, import imbalance. In 2011, the imbalance was 14.6%. Last year it came down a little, but now it's gone down to 9. something percent. So this trade deficit is narrowing down and quite encouraging. A lot of work also needs to go into it. Export, as I said earlier, from last year growth. This year, it has grown by 14%. Ethiopia, for the first time, we've exported 3.5 billion dollars worth amount. The highest we had in the past was close to 3 billion, but now we have surpassed that. We can say it's a big growth again because export increased. It's not because imports are going down, but imports, the import is 1.6% has grown. And so annually, export grows with two digits. If we curb the import rate a bit, in a few years, the deficit will come down. So we need to work more on export and control import on vital issues only. That would be our work in the years ahead also. That way, we would be able to increase our, sorry, to decrease our inflation. Or any loan pressure. It was 37% of our GDP, now it has come down to 26%. We look, that's our entire loans, but when we look at the timeframe, the trend is on the decrease. And this is because of restructuring loans with our partners. In the past three years, we have stopped receiving commercial loan because this has been very damaging to us. We have stopped it altogether. Some loans, we're trying to pay them in a better manner. So this loan pressure is decreasing to a certain extent. Not only that, but we need one more, two years to strengthen this, but our loan capacity is also increasing. So also on the foreign investments, even in our diverse challenges, this has grown by 20%, 2.7 billion dollars worth has gone into Ethiopia. So this 2.7 billion dollars is actually what we received. Many, excuse me, a few African countries were able to manage that. It's only COVID, but we had to undergo elections also. So going forward, this would continue to improve. One major thing is the ease of doing business. We're working to make the environment welcoming and this has been successful. We would continue to work on this. And also, regions need to create investments. It's happening, but we'll continue along the same path. And so that we'd strengthen our investment capacity. That's critical for our economic development. The loans and investment changes also, the difference is increasing. Two years ago, the difference between investment and loans, the difference was 14.5%. Last year it came down a bit, but this year it has gone down to 9% in vis-à-vis GDP. From the entire resource of the country, 20% of it is saved, would be saved. And then the rest would be, and then invested, 80% would be consumed. That's in line with GDP. But when you look at our investment with GDP, 30%, so there's a 10% gap. And so this 10% would be completed with investments. So when we increase our investment, instead of consuming 80, this should come down to 70, 60. That would increase our local investment and boost our economic development. That's why we say we need to increase our saving. The current difference that we have is lower than 10, but if we increase our savings, would have more room for local investment. Vis-à-vis the financial sector, one that helps us saving the change in the bank system. In two years ago, Ethiopians who have a bank account, it's true that one, in the Jodhoub, two, three accounts. There's only 37.8 people who have bank accounts. Not to say that everyone has a single one, but the entire book accounts were 38. something million. But two years later now, 66.2 million customers are there in the banks. The reason being, not only the increasing of savings, there's a change in cash note is also there. And also, saving is there, in line with the GDP this year. This is going up to 30%. So this financial sector is strengthening the financial sector and helped them to give loans. This year, it has given out more than 20% loans. Not only this, as you remember, government loan used to be higher than the private sector, but this year, so more than 74% of loans is given to the private sector. Government sectors received only 25%. It's, we have done more than our expectation in this regard. And also, branches of banks rose from 5,000 and up to 7,000, more than 7,000 branches. Not only this, but the financial inclusion, mobile banking is started. So 6 million people are making, are registered for mobile banking. If we broaden this work in a very short time, our citizens in remote areas can be included in the bank system. Concerning the bank system, considering the current situations, they say we don't have a bank in this area, in that area. To Parliament and then to our development partners, that's something I want to make clear. In Ethiopia, bank, electricity, water, drinking water, schools is a luxury. It's not something that each citizen gets everywhere. Many people do not have banks. So it's not extraordinary. In Ethiopia, 500 water does, they do not have a single bank branch. So this is not something surprising. We do not make a lot of noise because there is no bank in a certain locality. A lot of work needs to go into. The same with electric power. 60% of Ethiopians do not have electric power. So when electric power fails, it's not something extraordinary. We need to improve on our services. But generally, but we don't say that there is no electricity in Pyeongchang or in Bolay because this is our national problem. If we get help, if we work hard, then we'd be productive. If we just say there's no bank, there's no electricity, it begs the question, did we have those in the past after all? In the financial sector, the amount of money of shareholders in comparison with last year, it was, last year was 99 billion. This has rose up to 144 billion in the private sector. A lot of money is going in by way of shareholding. Be that as it may, the private banks, the shareholders' amount of resources is less than 8%. 92% is the money of the farmers. 92% of the money of private banks belongs to the Ethiopian people. It's their saving. So we need to see where this money is going. Their shareholders have, they put in 8% share. 90% of the money is saved by the people. It's for reinvestment for agriculture. If this is not the case, the system of the bank would not be in line with our expectations. So we need to work in that regard. The second main problem is loan. They do not return back loans. They have all sorts of excuses. In Gemma Investor, they says there's a displacement in Matatral, so I cannot work in Gemma. The banks need to follow this very carefully. Make sure that they do what they're supposed to do and return their loans. These two areas are prominent problem. One is, the money is collected from the people. This should create opportunities for investments by the people. And secondly, those that have taken a lot of loans, they don't return the loans. And that also relates with inflation. So this needs to be monitored and followed up. Having touched these basic issues. Moving on to inflation, many questions were raised in that regard. And it's true that it should be raised, they should be raised. However, inflation, price inflation and price increment in inflation is not the same. Inflation, price inflation and cost of life, there's a bit of difference. One would exasperate the other. When one raises up, the other one also raises up, but they're not exactly the same. Inflation means last year, the price for this bottle, the price increment from that of last year, that is the inflation. For instance, this water, if it has increased by one Let's, for instance, this water, if it has increased by one bur, if the income of every citizen increases by ten bur, then they not feel the change. But if the water, the price, the water increases and the in, income of the people did not increase, this would, would create a high cost of life. High cost of life is shortage of income. If our in, income is more than our expenditure, then it will not be a problem. But however, we, the, the expense of the people is on the increase. So the cost of life, if for instance, next year, next year, if we come up with more commodities and stop inflation, it will not stop high cost of life within one year. High cost of life for the past sixteen years has been, every year there was double digit inflation. So this is built-in inflation, one building on the other. So consumers is making difficult to, to purchase basics of life. In Ethiopia, those that purchase has been very challenging. So with the, the support of the government and the people, we need to increase our development, production and identify items that creates, that create inflation. Try to stabilize the market as much as possible, remove hurdles from the market system. So what are the causes of the inflation, moving on to the causes of inflation? Challenges are there, but the main reason of the challenge is the difference between supply and demand. Supply, the need for supply is, is increasing, demand is increasing, but the supplies could not meet the, the needs. This creates high prices. Secondly, in the supply chain, problems in the supply chain, not only production problems, but the trade chains create problems. How many problems in this regard? Thirdly, fiscal and budget policy control the money we release in market. Need to make sure it does not create inflation. This needs to be reviewed. So the global price increment has also needs to be taken into consideration because we import many items. So we import inflations as it were. These themselves need to be scrutinized. The other one is, though, not very significant. Producers, the poor products, thinking that they would increase the price after a while. So not only the, the consumers also, hearing that the price would increase and they can afford products. This creates artificial market crisis. So these and other problems.
Unless we see this aggregately and bring about solutions, it will only get harder and bring about pressure on our citizens. In this regard, the Minister of Finance explained in detail that the government has been trying to import food-related items with large amount of budget allocated. And sectoral associations are provided with half billion in support. This is one area where people was lower income benefit from. The chain by itself is irregular, therefore there are supports provided in this regard. The private sector using Franco Valuta imports wheat, sugar, oil, rice and food for children. But the money allocated in Franco Valuta is not enough. And so the government has allocated additional resource for wheat and sugar. All these efforts did not reduce it to the amount we expect to reduce the inflation, but it contributed. If you go to the entire continent or at a global level, inflation is existent. And there are efforts however. Let's look at oil, for instance. In the last three years, petroleum purchased at a price cannot be sold in the country. So the government has lost a lot of amount of money. Forty seven point eight billion bur was sold. The price of petroleum, if you go to any one of our neighboring countries, if you even go to countries that has ports, they don't provide it at a price we provide it. It's important that we are selling at a discounted price. But who are we benefiting is a good question. One point two million cars exist in Ethiopia and out of that, the transport sector, certain amount of cars. It could be important to support public transportation. However, supporting people that drive three, four cars is not really relevant. Therefore, at a country level, how are we going to be able to identify which vehicles are used for public transportation and others to purchase at an international price? It's not easy, as you may think, because public and private separation is very difficult. And it's very hard to monitor depots. But however, in general, we have to support those that should be supported and others should not because it will not reduce inflation. There are certain activities we have started. Service utility payments for water, electricity and so on. The government is trying to support in that regard as well. To make sure that they don't put pressure on the majority of the public. However, we have to still see how significant the support is. And Addis Ababa, you remember that we built one bakery. It wasn't enough, so we built another one. The inflation is not only putting pressure in Addis Ababa, but also other major cities as well. Therefore, private investors and other countries that are willing to support, we have completed our preparation to install factories. Therefore, Sheikh Mohammed Al Lamodi, CEO, the founder of Midrok, is standing next to us. Other investors are also with us, Ngundar, Swadona, Kmt and the likes. We're going to be having installation of bakery factories. So when we install these bakeries and provide wheat, it will support, provide food for the public. When our process of producing a product modernizes, the change will also come. The, the, the question was raised, what is the government thinking about supporting the public that stood in the rain and voted for you? But what we're saying is that we're asking investors and other countries to install these factories for the public, which is ten of them. When we expand this kind of activities, it will definitely be able to reduce inflation. In order to do that, it's important all of us give our contributions. The local private investors are dismantling the value chain and some of them are banned, some of them are standing trial. And this will also be important to regulate. The main focus is financial and physical supervision for the coming year. In order to strengthen that, governmental and non-governmental activities, necessary productions and those we cannot produce should be imported. Sustainable solutions are important. As I've said, there are built-in inflations that are, that are cured over the couple of years. And the activities we started last year to make sure that our land should be edible is important. Both government and private areas, be it in schools, on the sides of the road, wherever it is, we have to be able to produce. No country that begs for wheat is given honor. In order to reclaim that honor, we have to make sure that no land is left empty. Even though it's not a private land, we have to work together to produce. There are good results registered last year, we'll continue with that. The other one is production of wheat in the dry season. If we can be able to increase what we have done last year by sixty, seventy, eighty percent, it will be a great deal. There are certain areas, we can plow, we have people, we have water. So we have to be able to produce wheat during the dry season. And so all citizens should participate in supporting these activities. The other one is adjacent lands. We have divided lands and household lands were mentioned to have been challenged for agriculture. But what we have said is that the division is in our mind. We can bring together the land, the farmers and ensure commercial farming. These are connected lands. It's only people that are putting boundaries. In that regard, we have been able to go greater miles. We have to still work on that. Every farmer can only be beneficiary if he or she can produce same type of agricultural products as the neighbor. Therefore, this adjacent lands farming process will be further strengthened. And the government will continue doing that. As it was mentioned earlier, it will and should be supported by finance. The agricultural sector in line with the loan and expenditure of our country. It's around nine percent. For people with smaller lands, the loan provided is not exceeding five percent. Unless we can be able to put resources in the agricultural sector, we'll not be able to register the results we aim. In this regard, for microfinance institutions are going to a level of a bank. The process is being completed. The main reason for that is to make sure that farmers continue their good relationship with microfinance institutions and to build it up to a level of bank. I hope that will be completed soon. The other one is the issue of green legacy. Producing, planting trees and further focusing on fruits and also refining what's important in our area. But in general, the culture of planting trees is very important. In Bulga, Misan, Shaka areas, from any other part of our country, they don't have better infrastructures. There is no unique road, factory or such infrastructure. But Shaka does not face poverty or starvation because they can collect fruits and honey from the forest. The forest by itself can feed us. Our cattle can feed from the forest and they can give us milk. If you want to understand the importance of planting trees, you just have to go to Shinka. There are issues of priority, not eating banana, choco or so on and so on. But there is no starvation there or hunger. It will benefit Ethiopia. It will bring more rain, it will increase our production, it will provide more food for our cattle. The progress we have in this year is very good, but it should continue. And it will help us improve better. The other one is import substitution like wheat and edible oil can be produced locally and we can reduce import. That's why we are making sure that deliberate support is being provided to private investors as well. So if we can be able to produce wheat, if we can be able to have factories for production of edible oil and wheat, we will not be at least facing hunger. We can do this, we don't need support on this. We have the forest for honey, we can work on our cattle for milk and also for bread, what we need is wheat. Option can be secondary, but we can substitute locally what we can do. The other one is the chain, the value chain, which is being controlled by few individuals. So we might need to enter into Mercato and change that as well. There are several merchants that are, traders that are trying to affect the lives of the poor. So we must expand the markets. In the coming year, we hope to reduce the growth of inflation. So we will make efforts within and outside of the budget. The National Bank, for instance, we will reduce loan and we'll try to cover loans using the treasury. Otherwise, if we continue to take loans, it will increase the inflation. We'll have strict supervisions in this regard. However, in many sectors, the economic effects that were not able to be registered resulted from inflation. There are acute challenges. There are the pressures coming from the international environment and other factors as well. Because of that, the inflation is not regulated as planned. And the government should take the necessary responsibility. We should not just say we took efforts and leave it as that. The poor, The poor, the demand or the objective is not to make sure there are options, but rather to make sure that they can buy and eat. So this would be the major focus area for the macroeconomy. In relation to excise stocks, it's levied on certain areas, tobacco and alcohol mainly, but basic goods are not subject to excise tax. However, we have to receive revenue, without that, there is no growth. We have health policies as well and for that also excise tax is important. Therefore, the area should be regulated, we have to rectify certain problems. In relation to cement, as I have previously mentioned, several projects are being implemented. Though the renaissance dam is of the idea of bringing about growth, it also consumes a lot of cement and because of that, there are challenges we are facing in relation to cement. Several buildings are, have stopped previously, but most of the buildings you see being completed in our country are because of the provision of finance. And because of that provision, cement will also be highly procured and there will be a shortage. Several FDIs are entering to the country to produce cement. The major point is to produce cement abundantly and there are interested corporations coming to the country. We might face a challenge for a year, but it will be no more a challenge after that. In relation to the agricultural sector, we said that attention should be given, we have started ambitious activities. We said that there should be options for the farmers to use their land to take loans. There should be efforts to invest our knowledge, money and human labor on agriculture. If we are done horizontally, we should also start focusing on vertical agriculture as well. There are widespread activities, especially the effort we started last year to be no longer dependent on rate-fed agriculture, that should also be to support our activities. The other one is water bank, water should be banked and we have to reduce loss of water and we have to utilize water properly. So when we continue doing that, it will improve our agriculture better. We have to be able to sustain what we have been able to do last year. In terms of revenue, we have taken, undertaken several reforms to improve revenue. The revenue more or less has changed, though the annual report has not been submitted. The eleven months execution, the plan was two hundred sixty-four billion, what we have received is two hundred fifty-nine. This is approximately ninety-eight percent. Compared to last year, there is more than forty-two billion BUR increment, which is nineteen percent. We have to sustain this growth. There are improvements, good results. If we continue doing this, of course, export is also registering good results. And also, we are regulating import, that's also impactful. However, we still have the least revenue compared to Sub-Saharan countries. Therefore, for that, reform by itself is not enough. It's not only a government that is interested to collect, but also a community that is proud to pay tax. Some people pay bribe to avoid paying taxes. So if we can be able to regulate and reform that, we can be able to advance the capital projects and work on growth as well. And in terms of project, as it has been said, in some sectors, there are better implementations registered, not only in education and in Toto, but also in sugar, renaissance dam, industrial And sectors that are going through closer supervisions, there are good results registered. We wish to execute better things, we plan and we work. There are things that should be balanced here. And Toto, we've been able to complete it within the timeframe, but there should be a question of, should we not have been able to complete it before that? The Unity Park, were there an option to complete it before the timeframe allocated? Having all this youth and resources, we have to be able to challenge and ask for the completion before time. The school projects, not only with the leadership of First Lady, but also in the regions, there are also remarkable achievements. But we have to still ask whether they're not being in a position to complete it in six months. Some countries completed hospitals in weeks, so we cannot be proud of completing construction of schools in month's time. The other one is the issue of supervision and monitoring of projects. The GDP of Ethiopia in this regard is highly affected by the delay of projects. The sugar project took ninety-two billion BUR because of the time span, but had we been able to complete it prior, we would have saved a lot of money that we can transfer to other sectors. This will also have effect on good governments. It was mentioned in relation to road projects and other projects as well. We have to have a change of attitude, we have to have a mentality of finishers because beginning and not finishing by itself is tiring. In this regard, there are several things that we can do and improve as a government. That's what we should take into account. This is not enough, the speed of completing projects is not enough. And Toto, had we been able to complete it before that time, it would have been, you know, great. There are more roads, more parking and the public is utilizing it, but we were not fast. It's not being fast in the eyes of people. All hierarchies should take into account that they have to complete what they have started. Because of that, we start projects, we don't complete them or see them progress as planned. So we have to supervise and fix that. The fairness of infrastructure was another question and how do you see the budget? Well, in this regard, as we have seen last year and before that, and as we can be able to see in the future, budget is not the only means of supporting infrastructure. Our budget is very small. We have other resources such as knowledge and human labor and other resources in different parts of our country. For example, this year, we planned to improve production of gold and some regions were able to collect thirty, forty kilograms using manual ways of collecting. But with modern, you know, techniques and administration and knowledge, they can be able to collect thousands. More than hundred millions of dollars were able to be exported because of such change. These issues will bring about employment, bring resources and change environment. If we're focused on budget only, we'll not be able to bring about change. In the rural areas, improving the houses of the elderly using volunteers is not in the budget, but imagine if we can be able to build one thousand houses, it will change the lives of many elderly mothers and fathers. Without allocating budget, we can modernize the lives of many citizens, elderly. Thousands of classrooms, elementary schools are being built by volunteers in different parts of the country. What is the problem to use the resources available and to build classrooms? Last year, thousands were built and we hope that will continue this year as well. If neighbors could be able to plow lands of adjacent elderly people, they can bring about an increase in production. Using these techniques, if other zones could also do better performance, we can bring good change. This or that, this year, there is an increment of fifteen percent on the budget. This fifteen percent increment, how significant is the change? We will see in practice. Six billion BUR support is now twelve billion. In terms of money, more is being allocated for the regions. Given the calculation given by the House of Federation, the amount has increased this year. There are regions that used to receive twenty, ten million, now they are receiving billions. Twenty-two billion was provided last year for regions aggregate, which is different from the previous year. So we have to see where this is being invested in. What the people should work on is that one officer or administrator of the Kabbalah, and if they have finance, if they have this and that positions, they will take their money. They should take it, go to the farmlands, they should be able to build schools. The leaders should act as service providers, not as bosses. That way, change will come. But we have at the moment several zones, waradas and so on and so on, that will not bring change. People adore warada, but if we have more and more waradas, we're losing money. One person should be able to undertake five or six activities. We've been discussing this with members of a council. And to be an example, I started driving my own car and said I don't need a driver and the ministers continued doing that. If they don't stop doing that this year, we will regulate it using a law. What we want is someone who can go to the grassroots level and participate in the change. We have remained as officials for so many years, but we, from here on, we have to go to the grassroots level and participate in the change. That change will be able to give us a chance to pass a better Ethiopia for our children.
The country that we're imagining going forward, this country that we imagine to make it real, the high officials must stop wasting money and not so useful expenditures, they need to change their structures also, they need to cover two, three tasks themselves. If we do that, then our children at least be able to eat. If we, if we want to keep our comfort, then the comfort will not reach our children. So we need to take strong measures in this regard. If regions would do that, they have huge land, they have huge human resources, they can indeed develop. In some regions, even warada leaders have bodyguards, two, three militia. This is not funny. If everybody needs an armed bodyguard, bodyguard will not attain prosperity. Warada leader must go down to the farmers and the bodyguards would need to go do farming if we do not go this way. If we increase those in authority with a boss mentality, we will not achieve prosperity. Concerning roads, it's true, in the past two, three years, we have tried to do a lot, we have assigned a lot of money on road construction, or in that, but countrywide, road issues have been answered. However, there's, we are coming up with a special committee to follow up the budget, the bids, the follow-up of projects, these needs research. There could be some shortages, even the time until the approval of budget, it costs a lot. The problem exists in many regions, we're looking into it and trying to come up with solutions. We need to ask why. However, in regions concerning roads, I want the parliament to take notes over until budget is assigned. They ask a lot of questions when budget is released, each zone does not follow up the construction. It says it's a federal project and lifts it a tad, that lifts it alone. So with the small reasons that could have easily been taken care of on the spot, then the project gets delayed. And the second problem is after the budget is released, the issue of compensation, after all, the roads are supposed to serve the people, the federal government is not a foreign government. So the regions, for the university, they ask for budget for roads and then the issue of compensation comes, it gets more than the budget, the same with roads, hospitals. The community must help. The reason why the land is for the people, that can use it for common purposes, this is not to say that we just dislodge the farmers, we need to pay proper compensation, but this should not tantamount, tantamount to sailing of lands. The road from Madanana to Jinka is underway, divided into four parts, it should be constructed, there's no question, it connects at Sabah with Omo, there are many cities in between, around Konso also. Design improvement work is underway, bid would be launched soon, but we cannot hurry so that we need to do a thorough work, we need to engage with contractors. Contractors, if we just give them work that they're not able to do, then it would be a failure. So work is underway and the budget is allocated. Regarding tourism, indeed, it has a huge potential, we need to work at it more, rudimentary works are underway, we need to strengthen. works are underway, we need to strengthen, coming up with new destinations, strengthening all destinations, doing announcement works, PR works. This rainy season that we're in now, in the Middle East, the heat is tremendous. It's good for them to come to Ethiopia, to Jinka and many wonderful areas, but they do not have that, they have beautiful forests in Jinka, Shekka. We need to do advertisement work, it's beneficial for all of us. So the historical sites, the historical sites, the natural resource that we have needs to be properly announced, advertised and sold. But a lot of work is underway in this regard. For instance, Lalibala, Axum and also the National Palace, there is a lot of historical heritage in that place, a lot of work is going there. Concerning heritage, especially protected heritages, are quite challenges, you cannot be done overnight concerning ours, a lot of work is underway. It might be a foot up to the middle of next year and planting trees. One reason is for wild animals that have left the country to come back to the country. Have you not seen the friendship we gave in our pool, the ducks came back, we did not announce that they should come back, but they did. We just provided the environment, nature has a way of attracting one another. Concerning job opportunities, both in private and in government, a lot of work is underway and changes are there. Quite a big number of people are employed, I do not want even to raise the number, but this joblessness issue, like somebody can be hired today and tomorrow is not on the job, so to know who's actually on the job and who's not needs to be automated and the information must be online automated. We cannot base facts on the report. But as you know, all these projects everywhere are employing all sorts of people, we need to modernize the data and attract heavy investments, open more doors of jobs concerning theft or corruption. Theft is a problem for prosperity and development, some steal time, some steal thoughts, some steal money, he doesn't know where, who to steal from. So we cannot fight this in a legal manner only, but come up with mindset change, attitude change, especially in cities. For small services, they expect money. I expect any party can pass, but in the coming government, one major task should be clearing away thieves. Thieves cannot hide behind religion or ethnic group or claim to be human rights fighters. A thief is a thief, Addis Ababa is suffering from thieves, we need to stop that. We need to draw our level best to handle this issue, otherwise we cannot think of prosperity or development. If a person cannot believe in hard work to prosper, if he looks into other deceitful measures would be very destructive. So we all need to do hard, you know, all accesses, there's a lot of complaints among the community. The problem with thefts, he steals and does not invest the money, but he spends the money drinking and all sorts of drugs. Even in the northern part of Ethiopia, we find this illicit use of drugs is rampant and very dangerous. So theft is a great, terrible challenge in our path to development, we need to do our level best to reduce the amount of theft. We cannot attain prosperity with the level of theft at the moment. Some want to buy political authority by their own money. We need to work with our government to stop that, it's not of benefit both for the thief and for other parties. Maybe we need to wrap up this part considering renaissance and then after a break, we continue. Concerning the renaissance, I have a lot of things I heard being said, the purpose, the need for Ethiopia is to take care of our economic issues and reduce the threat of Sudan, reduce the threat that it poses on Egypt and it produces energy and prosperity for all of us. If there is any water problems, we deal with it in a concerted effort, all of us working together, we want peace, that's what we are aiming at. Many countries of the world are convinced that Ethiopia does not have any wish to incur harm on their neighboring countries, on its neighboring countries. That would not waste time hustling. We are planting trees so that Sudan would get more money than it currently gets, because if there's a lot of rain, Egypt can actually get more money than it actually does now. Our citizens are planting trees, we're increasing the amount of water, we would benefit and others also would benefit. We want peace, we want development. We need to work in cooperation with other countries who will begin the project and work towards its completion. God helps us to succeed and will complete the dam according to the time limit. Thank you, let's have a twenty minutes break and come back.
Les forces héritrent doivent quitter immédiatement le territoire éthiopien conformément à la demande formulée par les autorités éthiopiennes en mars dernier. Nous prenons note des informations relatives au redéploiement de ces forces vers la frontière qui doit être rapidement vérifiée. Deuxièmement, l'urgence est de permettre l'accès humanitaire. Alors que la situation au Tigré est chaque jour plus alarmante, il est essentiel de répondre aux immenses besoins et de rétablir l'électricité, les communications et les services bancaires. Nous appelons à lever toutes les entraves, notamment par la réouverture de l'aéroport de Mekelle, l'autroide visa de longue durée aux personnels humanitaires et l'autorisation de moyens de communication par satellite. Les infrastructures vitales pour l'acheminement de l'Aide doivent être préservées. La France renouvelle sa condamnation des attaques meurtrières qui ont frappé des équipes de médecins sans frontières. Au moins douze personnels ont perdu la vie depuis le début du conflit. Ces crimes ne doivent pas rester impunis. La protection des personnels humanitaires et médicaux est une obligation qui s'impose à toutes les parties. La préservation de l'unité, de l'intégrité territoriale de l'Ethiopie est une priorité, c'est mon troisième point. Le lancement d'un dialogue national incluant des représentants de tous les partis et de toutes les régions doit y contribuer. Nous appelons l'ensemble des forces politiques et militaires en Éthiopie à s'abstenir de toute action susceptible d'ajouter à l'instabilité. La reconciliation passe aussi par la lutte contre l'impunité. Il est impératif que puisse poursuivre l'enquête sur les graves violations des droits de l'homme commises au Tigré, menée conjointement par le Commissariat aux droits de l'Homme et la Commission éthiopienne des droits de l'Homme. Il importe que des procédures judiciaires crédibles soient menées en toute transparence. Enfin, la France est préoccupée par l'impact de la crise sur la stabilité régionale. Nous appelons les pays de la région à résoudre leurs différences par le dialogue et à répondre de manière constructive aux efforts de médiation de l'Union Africaine. Je vous remercie. Je reprends mes fonctions de président du Conseil et je donne à présent la parole aux représentants de l'Ethiopie.
Mister President, let me begin by congratulating you for assuming the presidency of the Security Council for the months. I assure you of my delegation's full support. Mister President, my country, Ethiopia, is undergoing a significant transformation that requires delicate and context-driven handling of its domestic affairs. In our bilateral meetings with members of the Council and the informal dialogue we had last month, we have exchanged views and concerns, all of which the government of Ethiopia approached and acted upon in a constructive manner. This being said, Mister President, I'm surprised by the rationale of calling for this open meeting. We are fully cognizant of the responsibility of this council to work toward this international peace and security. The very first requisite for this honorous responsibility is to encourage dialogue and prevent escalation through constructive engagement and reinforcement of achievements. This meeting is called at a time when the government of Ethiopia took bold measures and political decision to meet the needs and well-being of its people affected by the law enforcement operation in Tigray. This measure should have encouraged our friends to give support and de-scale the unhelpful pressure. Equally, we wish to express our appreciation to all of you for recognizing our resolve for peace behind this difficult initiative we have taken. Mister President, since the Council held the informal interactive dialogue on the humanitarian situation in Ethiopia, there are critical developments that deserve your recognition and constructive outlook. On twenty eighth June twenty twenty-one, the government of Ethiopia decided to cease the active military engagement of the Ethiopian National Defense Forces in the Tigray region. This decision for humanitarian ceasefire was reached after a concerted deliberation with various stakeholders and partners. We hope that this magnanimous and far-sided decision will not be wasted by the irresponsible conduct of the TPLF group, which the government of Ethiopia opted to tolerate for the sake of the people of Tigray and to alleviate the humanitarian situation in the region. The decision to cease military operation is hoped to create a conducive environment for humanitarian operation in Tigray. It will also pave the way for an inclusive national dialogue. The TPLF group that were pursuing continued its belligerence to protect few individuals, in furtherance of its agenda, it began conscripting young and elderly civilians, women and men to fight highly trained and armed men of their country. This exposed the people in Tigray for the military confrontation that are not prepared for. Furthermore, it posed a risk for disruption to the agricultural season. The group's ethnically charged tactic of vying the people against the government is also found to be determinantal to our innate social fabric. As a result, the government of Ethiopia, at the beaver of their primary responsibility to protect its people, made a difficult political decision to suspend active military operation in favor of safeguarding the unity, sovereignty and territorial integrity of the Ethiopian state. Now we believe we have created a space for unfettered humanitarian assistance and proper conduct for the agricultural planting season. In addition, we will augment humanitarian efforts in the region including distribution of food and non-food items from warehouse across Tigray. The National Disaster Risk Management Commission and the five humanitarian agencies deployed in all waradas of the region are set to resume their function. Furthermore, we are in the process of adapting the humanitarian assistance guideline and coordination mechanism to the new development. Public services will also resume once we create a situation for the safe operation of the infrastructure and their operators. Mister President, Ethiopia faces the inevitable journey of addressing the political and structural underpinnings of what we had experienced last November when our defense forces were attacked from within. The immediate need lies in creating an environment for the delivery of much-needed humanitarian assistance. In this regard, the government will continue to exert maximum effort and allocate the available resource toward this end. We welcome and appreciate the concern expressed by the Council members for our compatriots in Tigray who have regrettably sustained the burden of the du choc de la loi en Tigré à cause des tactiques cardiaques du groupe TPLF. Il est important de souligner que les blessures et les souffrances de tous les Éthiopiens sont inacceptablees. Les défauts en prévention de ces souffrances ne sont pas quelque chose que le gouvernement bénigne. Dans le même sens, nous prenons la responsabilité d'assurer l'accountabilité et de remédier à ces problèmes avec la plus grande sérieux. Pour être clair, je voudrais reaffirmer mon engagement fermé pour ces responsabilités du État. Il y a certainement des facteurs internets ainsi que externes qui jouent dans les défis de sécurité que nous face. Les traitements de sécurité externes contre nous par notre part compliquent nos dynamiques politiques internes et nous détruisent des priorités nationales importantes. Je souhaite implore ce Conseil à agir avec l'ensemble de notre conscience de ce défi externe que l'Éthiopie face. Monsieur Président, suite à l'organisation de l'élection nationale pacifique et réussite ces mois-là, les efforts sont maintenant orientés vers le développement d'un pays stronger, unifié et démocratique. Dans cette connexion, le gouvernement éthiopien développe une roadmap pour un dialogue inclusif pour assurer une paix et une stabilité durable. Je veux reaffirmer mon engagement pour continuer à assurer l'accountabilité pour les abus des droits de l'homme et les crimes commis dans la région Tigré. Nous allons s'assurer que l'impunité ne soit pas tolérée. Nous restons engagés à travailler avec tous les partenaires bilatéraux et multilateraux par un partenariat authentique et une compréhension que le gouvernement de l'Éthiopie est capable de surmonter ces défis. Nous encourageons les membres du Conseil à jouer un rôle constructif pour soutenir le gouvernement éthiopien dans l'implémentation de la ceasefire humanitaire. Nous remercions les membres du Conseil qui ont accepté ce geste positif. En contraste, je voudrais faire clair que les pressions politiques et les mesures bilatérales coercives contre l'Éthiopie sont inacceptables et violent les principes de lois internationales. Les pressions excessives mettront cet ancien pays de 110 millions de personnes à la precipice et à la profondeur sans possibilité de récupération. Le peuple de l'Éthiopie est en fait en train de surveiller et ne devrait pas percevoir que notre prononciation les pousse à l'abysse et à la fâche politique infinie. Pour l'Éthiopie, c'est un moment d'introspection, un revue authentique de notre succès et des défis. L'essentiel est comment guérir nos blessures. Il y a des griffes incomplis, des morgues comme la massacre de Maikhadra par le groupe TPLF, les souffrances du peuple de Walkaït et Agade qui ont été évacués de leur pays ancestral depuis 30 ans. Il faut donc y avoir une clôture appropriée. La culture politique de l'impunité devrait avoir une clôture. Nous savons que ce qui nous exalte en tant que nation est de surmonter nos propres défis. Ce qui nous alimenterait en tant que nation est notre engagement et le engagement de notre peuple pour se porter pour la paix. Nous pouvons être pauvres, mais nous avons aussi de la foi. Nous sommes des gens avec des valeurs, des valeurs chers. Pour l'Éthiopie, la foi est toujours vive. En conclusion, j'espère que les membres du Conseil ont pris la situation dans mon pays dans la bonne perspective, ont compris la magnitude des défis que nous face et ont aussi reconnu l'importance que nous avons prise dans ce sens. Ce que nous avons vraiment besoin à ce moment est le soutien, la compréhension et la solidarité de la communauté internationale. C'est pourquoi je veux conclure en appelant les partenaires et amis internationaux à continuer à évoluer l'assistance humanitaire pour répondre aux besoins humanitaires dans l'Éthiopie. Je remercie le Président.
Je remercie le représentant de l'Éthiopie de sa déclaration. Il n'y a plus doratrice ou dorateur inscrit sur la liste. La séance est levée. Au représentant du Kenya.
Merci Monsieur Président et permettez-moi de vous féliciter pour avoir assumé la présidence pendant le mois et remercier Estonie pour avoir guidé le Conseil de manière habile la semaine dernière. Monsieur Président, nous faisons cette déclaration unifiée en tant que trois plus un africains, c'est-à-dire Kenya, Niger, Saint-Vincent et les Grenadiens, et Tunisie. Nous sommes unifiés dans la protection de la paix et de la sécurité de l'Afrique et des intérêts des peuples et des États africains à être soutenus au Conseil de sécurité. Nous prenons note de la briefe de Rosemary Di Carlo de l'USG et de Ramesh d'Acting USG et nous accueillons également la participation de l'Éthiopie et les remercions pour leur mise à jour sur le Conseil sur les développements depuis notre rencontre il y a deux semaines pour un dialogue interactif informatif. Nous avons été touchés par les souffrances que nos frères et soeurs ont expérimentées en Éthiopie parce que chaque vie compte et est sanctualement. Nous envoyons nos condoléances à toutes les familles qui ont perdu des membres à cause de la violence, y compris les travailleurs d'aide. Nous sommes outragés et choqués par la douleur de toutes les femmes et les filles qui ont souffert de la violence sexuelle. Nous condamnons sans réservation le targetage des civils armés. En faisant cela, nous appelons tous les partis avec les moyens de causer de la peine à saisir n'importe quelle attaque ou menace aux civils armés. Nous demandons qu'ils respectent la loi internationale, y compris les principes humanitaires et les codes moraux qui sont au cœur des cultures et des religions de l'Afrique. Pendant les derniers mois où la division et la violence ont été expérimentées en Tigré, nous avons discuté pour une expansion et une robuste accessibilité humanitaire. Nous avons accueilli le ressourcement du gouvernement d'une proportion significative des besoins humanitaires en Tigré. Nous avons appelé la communauté internationale humanitaire à bouger à la vitesse et à évoluer l'assistance. Nous l'avons applaudie et aussi nous avons été déçus par les continues manque en réponse. Nous appelons encore tous les États, les institutions internationales, les organisations et les individus de bonheur à redoublent leur effort en Tigré. Nous soutenons les aspirations démocratiques du peuple éthiopien. En effet, nous avons discuté que la communauté internationale et le Conseil de sécurité donnent au pays l'espace pour effectuer ses élections les plus récentes. Nous avons été gratifiés par les rapports interrêts, spécialement ceux de la mission d'observateur de l'Union Africaine affirmant que, et je cite : "Malgré certains obstacles opérationnels, logistiques, de sécurité, politiques et liés au COVID-19, les processus préélections et d'élection étaient pratiqués d'une manière ordinaire, pacifique et crédible." Nous espérons que l'élection deviendra une fondation d'une conversation nationale robuste sur la paix, la cohésion, le développement et la célébration de la diversité et du pluralisme. Aujourd'hui, la situation en Tigré reste une préoccupation, mais il y a des opportunités claires pour la paix à émerger. Derrière les verrous, nous avons appelé ce Conseil à prendre des actions prudent et responsables qui encourageront l'outrevisage humanitaire des peuples souffrant et ne périront pas la situation en Tigré. Nous réitérions de nouveau ce strong et sincère appel. Nous accueillons le ceasefire humanitaire unilatéral par le gouvernement de l'Éthiopie et stressons que ce Conseil et la communauté internationale devraient apprécier cette décision par le gouvernement comme une opportunité qui doit être capitalisée. Nous espérons que cela peut être traduit en une ceasefire permanente, comprehensive et durable afin d'extender la soin humanitaire à chaque homme, femme et enfant qui en a besoin dans chaque partie de Tigré. Cette ceasefire doit être assurée et implémentée. Nous sommes particulièrement concernés par les implications potentielles de la destruction récente du pont sur le rivière Tekezi qui connecte Shire et Gonda. Cela est indicative d'une attitude insolente des besoins des civils en crise et que des partis ne observent pas une ceasefire. Nous condamnons la destruction délibérée de l'objet civil qui est vital pour la livraison de l'aide humanitaire. Ces actions doivent être arrêtées si nous sommes vraiment à mettre en œuvre le silence des guns que les Africains ont mis en place dans notre agenda 2063 pour travailler comme région sur l'endition de toutes les guerres, les conflits civiles, la violence basée sur le genre, les conflits violents et la prévention du génocide. Nous appelons maintenant tous les partis armés actuellement en Tigré ou dans la région à réclamer la voix d'Afrique qui appelle.
Concernant les questions actuelles, je souhaite que tout le peuple puisse entendre ce qui se passe, pour poser des questions de manière mesurée. Parce que je dois parler de manière mesurée, c'est pourquoi. Situation actuelle. C'est comme informer une personne qui a assisté au mât, mais juste pour donner quelques informations, pourquoi cela s'est passé? Ne devrions-nous pas arrêter cela de se produire? Qu'est-ce qui se passe maintenant? Pour toucher brièvement à cela, dans notre position actuelle, en Éthiopie, sans un danger éminent se produire, nous n'avons pas l'intention d'engager en guerre ou conflits avec n'importe quel partenaire. Nous voulons développer dans un esprit de coopération et de paix. Nous devons comprendre cela de deux façons, surtout globalement. Nous donnerions la préférence pour la paix, nous payerions tout prix pour atteindre la paix. Si cela infringe notre honneur et la souveraineté, nous serions forcés d'engager dans les conflits. Concernant le TPLF, parmi de nombreux raisons, je mentionnerai quatre raisons qui posent un danger éminent. C'est la première. Il a développé une force armée. Il a commencé à utiliser le badge et aussi les ressources qu'il a accumulées pour organiser une armée. Il a fait beaucoup de travail dans cette ligne. S'ils ont préparé une armée, ils n'ont pas arrêté là, mais ils ont commencé à s'encrocher avec le reste de l'Éthiopie et ont commencé à déstabiliser toute la nation de toutes sortes de façons. C'est assez dangereux et à la fin du jour, cela endangerait l'existence de la nation. Et c'est considéré comme une menace. Deuxièmement, un danger éminent entraîne la culture d'emploi d'autres pour la destruction. Ils existent déjà. Des forces payées, des forces entraînées, donné le même entraînement dans Oromia. Ils sont des gens payés, entraînés, donnés du training, de l'argent. Le même dans Amara, ils sont des gens payés, le même dans Ben Shango. Ils organisent donc ces groupes payés, donnant leur agenda, leur argent, organisant, non seulement renforçant leur pouvoir où ils ont leur droit, mais afin qu'ils n'aient pas de paix dans le reste de l'Éthiopie. C'est ce qu'ils font ouvertement, d'une manière très organisée. Ce que nous avons appris de eux, c'est que vous ne pouvez pas commencer un feu et rester incandonné à la fin du jour. C'est assez... Ça donne beaucoup de leçons éducatrices. Comme je l'ai dit plusieurs fois, les gens qui ont vécu dans Oromia, qui ne sont pas Oromos, ils ont vécu ensemble 40, 50 ans, mais maintenant, pour aucune raison, les gens sont tués et ont été déplacés. Ils utilisent donc leurs groupes payés et ils ont une équipe de propagande. Nous écoutons les nouvelles de eux-mêmes. Ils causent le déplacement, ils sont les premiers à émettre les nouvelles. Ils se mettent à courir, Amara, vous êtes détruit. Et les gens croient à cette propagande et vont dans la ligne. Qui a causé le déplacement? Quel est le but derrière cela? Les gens trouvent difficile de trouver la vraie raison. Je sais que certains d'entre vous ont été même challengés par cela. Ils créent des bruits ici, ils sont renforcés et organisés là. Et la chose triste, c'est qu'ils disent que c'est seulement nous qui sommes une région pacifique. C'est une blague mauvaise en fait. Vous le savez tous très clairement, même dans ce parlement, ceux qui étaient membres ici dans une telle réunion formelle, pas dans des réunions fermées. Il y avait des gens qui aimait la mort de gens, mais ils prétendent travailler pour les droits de l'homme. Tout cela est par design, créant des bruits, des conflits qui ne laissera pas l'Éthiopie vivre pacifiquement et atteindre ses aspirations. Ils donnent des ordres aux groupes que ils payent. Quand nous... quand nous... et ils disent que nous sommes meilleurs, le gouvernement échoue. Nous devrions venir et prendre le gouvernement. C'est le type d'invitation qu'ils ont lancé aux Éthiopiens. La deuxième chose qui était assez délicate était pas seulement les groupes payés, ils causent distrust, métrisme entre les Éthiopiens. Troisièmement, le peuple de Tigré, comme vous le savez, a beaucoup de problèmes. Même lorsque le TPLF était en pouvoir dans le passé, ils ne pouvaient pas améliorer la pauvreté de Tigré quand ils étaient encore en pouvoir. Mais ils ne se sont pas occupés de ça, mais ils ont commencé à créer des conflits et des guerres entre le peuple de Tigré. Tout cela était là, mais ce qui le rendait pire était l'attaque sur la frontière nord-est. La frontière nord-est n'était pas juste une armée, mais c'était comme une couverture qui protégeait les Tigrés pendant 20 ans. Moi-même, deux, trois ans passés là, à protéger les Tigrés. J'ai abandonné ma formation, mon cousin est mort, ma nièce est morte, un jeune homme très jeune. Beaucoup de gens ont perdu leur vie. C'est cette armée. Elle a fait beaucoup de bien pour le peuple. Le minimum qu'ils auraient pu faire était au moins ne pas couper le coude de nos soldats femmes. You are helping them in the farms, building schools. And these soldiers belong to the poor Ethiopians. It does not belong to a separate class. So they, not only killing them, but trying to take away their morals. It's terrible. It's not just attacks, it's dehumanizing, demoralizing. Many were trampled by tongues, many died in a very horrific manner. It's not limited to that. They didn't stop there. They wanted to increase. They wanted to move on to Gonda and they wanted to expand their operations. So this is clear and imminent for dangers that forced the federal government into law enforcement campaign. And it was forced to return the arms that they held by force. During the formal conflict, as you know, it took only a small amount of time. So these and other problems that I have mentioned and have not mentioned, we begged them literally by sending mediators, elders, politicians, religious leaders and also business people from that area. We wanted to talk sense and reason to them that you cannot begin a war and live at peace. Not only in Ethiopia, even in other countries, you cannot start a problem, a conflict and Ethiopians remain. Even the conflict in Syria and Yemen is causing problems in us here in Ethiopia. This is not useful, quite destructive to people. And many nations have been quite dismantled and we beg them to stop this. Because there was too many beggings, they became too proud that they were invincible to the point of sickness. So the first work of the government was to contain the conflict right on the spot, that it would not expand to other parts of the country. This was very successful. Secondly, when the conflict started, they wanted to disrupt the stability of Ethiopia everywhere because when displacements occur here and there and then the country would be divided. We did a lot of work to avert that also and also among conflict. We wanted to focus on the junta force only. We didn't want to, to attack civilians. We did our level best to avoid that. So that the armed struggle will not go into cities. This makes the Ethiopian army and the Ethiopian government high on moral platform. The destruction at Mykandra did not reiterate or retaliate in the same manner. It could be historical, they're trying to cover it with live fake news, but it is historical achievement. When we captured the junta, members of the junta leadership. Our army followed the rule of engagement and code of conduct. Those that, anybody that have transgressed, we have held it accountable. We have not said, they fought for us and approved impunity, we'd not do that. By the way, the junta force after the incarceration, the parliament can go and look at it in a very conducive environment that is comparable to prisons in the West. There was no torture. They engaged in torture. We did not retaliate. We're doing everything as per the law. Not only this. After changing the situation in Tigray, that attempts were made that the people would administer themselves, a lot of effort went that way. The situation showed the truth of that fact to ensure peace and security of the country so that aid would reach the poor people. Though we were in dire economic condition, we gave aid to that region, to Tigray region, more than any other country in the world. Some countries, though they were out of line sometimes, as long as they gave aid, we would try to create conducive situation. We tried our level best that government services would resume. Sometimes the speed of success was quite remarkable. For instance, to get telecommunications lines back, thirty people were killed by the junta. They were killing our servicemen, but we we continued giving electric light. Concerning agriculture, we bought seeds, quality seeds, fertilizers and cattle and also tractor. We engaged in a lot of effort, health services, educational services so that they would resume working, that government offices would reopen. A lot of effort has been done after the operation was concluded. So we needed to train the new administration. We allocate additional resource when they wanted police. We trained police there so that they would administer themselves in a peaceful manner. In order to do this, in the past months, the Ethiopian government and the Ethiopian people have spent more than hundred billion. If we use that somewhere else, it could be of great use, but we wanted to give priority to the crisis in Tigray. Those are our, were our attempts. When we look at the outcomes, the results, when we look at that. The culprits of the junta have been brought to the law. Some were, the measures were taken against others. The northern army is free, we have now our arms back. The missiles are in our hands. The missiles bought by data would no more be used to destroy Ethiopia. More than everything, our defense force has been reorganized in a strong national army. This has been, this has given us a huge opportunity to do that. Prior to that time, when you plan, you can engage in anything. The destructive forces would have the information, so we would not go forward. When you deploy a force, half of it would work against the government or be part of the destructive campaigns or to reorganize the defense force. We did a lot of work, we used the opportunity. And second, a more important thing, Ethiopia, they traded to divide Ethiopians and Ethiopia also. This has been foiled to a great deal. Ethiopia more than ever now. Ethiopians are now working together, honoring one another, respecting one another. We need to strengthen this. The desire to divide the country has not been very successful. In all these attempts, what were the responses? One is we invested money, time, our people. We have toiled hard. But we cannot remove the evil seed of tribalism that was planted for forty years. Attempts were there. We've not, we've not been very successful in that regard. Tribalism is cancer. Maybe this has been educational, but the poison still remains. And secondly, those trained in false propaganda that they're using money stolen from us, that was huge. It's true that what we all need to know, that in the propaganda campaign, they not, they not do it by itself, but there are other forces that were helping us along that line. They're using their money, they have written, they have used media outlets. The Defense Force, Minister of Defense Force paid a lot of price, heavy price. The junta wanted to have human shield. One of the techniques of the junta is when they kill, it's heroic. When they die, they immediately revert to being civilians. They remove, they're not using army uniforms. So our army could not shoot because they look civilians, but they on their part is doing two evil acts. Our defense force was forced to overreact. They were enticing them to overreact if it's an armed force. If its survival is at stake, it can take a measure. The other one is our problem. When they wanted to exaggerate the errors in our operations. They, they, nobody says these are normal errors in a normal operations. They wanted to exaggerate. The same army when it gained Somalia and Eritrea, even lesser errors. They wanted to exaggerate our errors. So based on these, we sat down and we had to do research as to what was going on on the ground. I know concerning the feeling of Ethiopians, we would know the repercussions. We would, we would know their feelings, but they said, "Let's do research and see which way is a better option." Ethiopian Eritrea fought for thirty years. During that time of thirty years, everything did not emanate from the two parties also, but there are other forces out of us that helped us fight a lot. There were forces that did a lot of work so that they would weaken Eritrea and Ethiopia. Many died.
Many people, many people died. Not a lot of resources have been wasted. And in the end, we're left with two areas with little resources. When we look at the current situation of Tigray, and my guess, there's not a lot of forces that want the conflict to stop. Their plan is to continue the conflict and to make sure that there is a deterioration to Tigray, Amara and Oromo and the likes. And there are indications of such kind. One of them is in a region called Awasa, in a city called Awasa. For example, two people could come to the government. The junta, and they say the junta lodged war against you. They did this and that and you're doing a law enforcement activity and they tell us that they have experienced the same thing in Awasa. And two other people will go to the junta and support, develop and do such and such for them. These people from Awasa, though they divide and act, they'll eventually sit down and discuss. The worth on Ethiopia and the situation. It's beyond the crisis. It's confusing sometimes. What really confuses me is that the people who raised the issues of displacement in Tigray and so on, what makes us not to follow them is that they don't even go to Beni Shangul Gumus and talk about the same facts. Other problems occurring in different parts of Ethiopia are not raised by these people. Ethiopia is Ethiopia and Ethiopians are Ethiopians. We should learn from our history and we should not follow the narrow path open for us. Let's go out and see Ukraine, for instance. Let's see what's going on in Ukraine. Issue of East Ukraine and the northern part of Ethiopia is similar. The decisions in Ukraine and their reaction and the decisions made in Ethiopia and their reactions are far distant. Why? The conflicts in Armenia and the area, we try to also learn from that. Afghanistan, Syria, Libya, Yemen, we try to see what happened there. We further went to Japan and Korea. What were the consequences of the conflicts? And what were the decisions made as people? And what changes did they bring about? And then we understood that the solution we give to the problem should be consistent. We should not kill an ox for the plague of a chicken. So we have to take time and understand the situation. We don't have to put in excessive efforts and time beyond required. So we decided there should be a moment of silence for everyone to think so that we can learn, so that others can learn, so that the world can learn from this. Especially other African countries will get a chance to learn from this. So we said, "Let's give it time." While doing that, we conducted several discussions in the region of Tigray also. I've had meetings with elite investors and different members of the public. Also conducted several meetings with military leaders. Some groups raised a question, comments of inability of continuing the conflict. What I want this house to understand and what the people of Ethiopia should understand is that we can continue with war for the next ten, twenty years. We have time, we have ammunition, we have people. What's difficult is bringing about growth, sustainable growth for ten years in Ethiopia. For example, from two or three regions in a week time, one, two, three weeks, hundred thousand special forces trained, equipped can be recruited. They're already available. If you say we need a militia, we can use two, three months and we can recruit half a million militia forces. Somehow equipped can be recruited. We are a country of hundred million people, so we can have one million youth campaigned and recruited for the war. The Ethiopian government did not wage war for people to participate. We can do that, but the problem is that it will result in death. And on the other hand, we're still going to have hunger and people are going to die from that as well. So no victory can come out of killing. Therefore, we come to a conclusion that it will not benefit us. So before the time of silence, time to think, prior to that, from the angle of military discipline, we have not been able to communicate that. We didn't pull out our forces when it was mentioned last time. It took more than one month. On four fronts, we've been pulling out our troops. From one side, while we're pulling our forces, not even you, not even the Junta, understood what was going on. Fifteen days before the election also, we took several forces outside of Tegra. It was only when the third group was coming out, that was when there were suspicions from the side of Tembien. There were communications saying that a lot of army members are coming out with ammunitions and so on. I'm talking about two thousand, three thousand vehicles. There were attempts to block roads, to burn cars and so on. But the activities undertaken before that were undetected. Perhaps the third one might have been suspected. The third forces regrouped from different areas from the center. While they were coming out, there are attempts to attack them. The fourth one, the strongest force was in Makali area. Thousands of cars left from there. They were in a favorable position, so it was not attacked. Even after they left, two days after they left, the Junta were not able to get into that area. It's only people that celebrated. Had they been able to do that, they would not have let thousands of cars leave the area. But that's not the truth. The truth is that we need time to think. It's time the farmers want to produce on their lands. So we don't want to be the reason to stop that. So we trained the police, the public in the area. We tried to create favorable situation. And we said that the army is not a police for the area. And we should not put ourselves in a fatigue. I believe that all sides should think about the benefits of that. But given our evaluation, we believe that the decision is positive, that we will not kill our ox for the plague of a chicken. What really made us, you know, get to this conclusion is that is not the displaced people. Of course, we want to bring back displaced persons. We have Corona in Ethiopia. We have shortage of oxygen ventilators, we want to buy that. All the projects you want to see completed that require huge investments and resources, we can't put them aside and deplete resources. We have returnees, large numbers. These are our citizens, so we have to work on them as well. The time of agriculture, for agriculture is important on both sides. So what we said was if we can leave and see if things could be, you know, better. For instance, inflation. One billion bir with, if we import that, it can somehow regulate the market. I'm talking one billion dollars. However, in order to import one billion dollar, our cars, the logistics we have in Ethiopia should be lined in jibuti. Instead of lining those cars in jibuti and if we recruit people to Tegra, it will make us choose between the wheat and the other side. Therefore, it's not only money and resource that we want to regulate the inflation. We decided that this is also important. All the missile we feared previously is out of the area. Therefore, we need time to think, to reassess, for the people to also see. We've been hearing a lot of news after we left the area. People are being killed because of their religion, because of belonging to a certain area. I believe the people of Ethiopia will not be deluded, delusured by that. What we're seeing is that the officials assigned for the people are being killed and being kidnapped. And no one wants to echo that. What's really surprising and what I want you to also understand is that in the past years, we have done, a lot of activities have been done in that area. And no media was resonating that. The past two days, the international media, the way it's reporting is surprising. It shows that Ethiopians should awaken. The media that refrained from reporting that remarkable execution of election is reporting this. We will not follow that path. There are countries that are attempting to change the government, that wants to change it. Our message to this government is that as long as Ethiopia stands, the issue of having individuals or these individuals in power is secondary. Instead of serving the interests of other countries, it's better to have a strong government. We have seen what the Ethiopian people want through the referendums. Therefore, we Ethiopians, there are channels they want us to follow, so we have to be attentive of that. This force, it has complicated issue related to review. Let me show, let me try to point out a few. As Ethiopian people start to hate the oppression, there could have been options to give pardon and to keep as it is. But there was a need for change. The second mistake was after the reform, the people was asked to pardon. The people gave its pardon as well. If this power was to secede in power and be proper, it could have stayed in power also. The mistake in the general review, the reason for it to succeed from prosperity is of importance here. Formal, informal accumulation of resource was also another challenge. After going to Tegra also, they could have sat as a regional government. We would not have entered into war. We never had interests to get into collusion. They wanted to do whatever they wanted. And that resulted in atrocity that can easily be valued by the mothers in Tegra. What we still need to see and think is the consequences of extended reviews. The people of Tegra passed several challenges. The people of Israel just reminds us of the people crossing the Red Sea. The people of Israel had the government of our state there, there would not have been any problem. But the reason they followed resulted in consequences. It's impossible to win Ethiopia. So it's important for all forces to think. The government is working through several challenges. And I don't think it will be difficult for the house to understand that. The decision we made, we believe, is important for Ethiopia and it's important for the journey of prosperity. And it will allow us to go on our own journey. We shouldn't follow as directed. A horse carrying a carriage cannot see, you know, its sight, so it just goes straight. So this time will allow us to think and to do activities we want to do. But interests regarding whether Ethiopia is weak and so on will not be important. The damage on Ethiopia will not be productive for others. The growth, however, will help them. So I could ask all parties to think, to stand and think. So the increase on the budget of the Defence Force, our expenses compared to the GDP is lower. Many countries, neighboring countries allocate better resources from their GDP. A large number also. Do I locate a budget equal to our national budget? It's not, they're not far, neighboring countries. I don't think we have allocated better resources or enough resources. But compared to previous years, law enforcement have been allocated with higher resource, high amount of resource. This hope. Ethiopian Defence Force carrying F-22, having information warfare, and being able to detect using radar and GPS and fighting both on the ground and in air, or having modern missiles, nuclear bomb, and that can defend any party. I mean, I cannot say that, there are limitations. However, there is one thing I can say. The force, the heart we have as Ethiopian Defence Force, it doesn't exist anywhere else. I have seen this. And I'm confident about it. They can travel up to forty kilometers on foot. Now our Defence Force, they're not paid enough. They go up and down mountains. They walk through rain and the sand, they fight for the dignity of their country. Though we live peacefully with anyone, our modern warfare is our heart. And this we have seen previously in our history as well. So war is not only using our ammunitions. Had that been the case, it would not have been possible to win the Junta. Therefore, the Defence Force does not have a lot of resources, but it has big heart, loves its country, there are activities to strengthen it. And the public, including you, understand that the Defence Force means Ethiopia. Haven't you seen that the public is feeding the Defence Force? The morale of the public will support it and will protect it. So with morale, with the necessary materials, we have to be able to strengthen it. Many young people are believing that we can only protect Ethiopia when we have a strong Defence Force. And they have to be willing to join our Defence Force. At time of no work, they will be able to go to farmlands and support. So the budget we have allocated at the moment, we believe it will help us do what we want. But if it demands more, we will be able to bring it back to you. We can only work when we have Ethiopia. Other infrastructure developments can only take place when Ethiopia exists. So it might be a priority area on demand. But it has been presented in such a way, given priority areas. It's not enough money, like I said. But it's a larger amount. It will help us defend Ethiopia. In our view, reforming the institution is important. The Unravel House, I want you to understand that around sixty embassies and consular offices, we still have to ask whether Ethiopia needs those or not. We don't need that at the moment.
You don't need to use our dollars everywhere. So from the number of embassies, thirty of them need to be closed down. That's the minimum. And the ambassador can sit here. The Ethiopian ambassador in Kenya. He can have a seat here. He can read newspaper on Kenya here if he follows up the situation here. If he has any appointment, he can go there. Many countries in connection with Corona, they have cut down embassies. So we don't need to create all these embassies everywhere. I trust this would change in the Ministry of Foreign Affairs come next September. The government that would be set up.
Even at any great price, it's a worthy cause. So patience. Not deciding without thinking. If we can get peace, then it's fantastic. Any price we pay for peace cannot be seen parallel to price we pay for war. We must pay price for peace development. Without peace, there is no development. If we develop, then other problems would take care of themselves. And health, concerning health. Avoiding death of mothers and children. A lot of work has been done. We are increasing the number of health posts and health centers. We're constructing housing for health officials. Working on clean drinking water. And also to help mothers, more than two thousand shelters are constructed for delivering mothers, we're constructing hospitals and also ambulances. Strengthen that, especially the private sector need to engage in it. Extensively, we need to make room for that. The issue of non-communicable diseases is true. Teaching universities are being engaged in cancer, kidney and heart conditions. Now we're investing in that also, coming up with new facilities. Things that needs to be supported, the private, like those that engage in heart medications. An Ethiopian heart surgeon. He was incarcerated by the past administration. Now he's released and he's doing a lot of work in this regard. We need to support such kind of ventures. Though they do not have much money, but they have a huge heart, so we need to support them in so many ways. Similar individuals are there that can do a lot of good work. We need to support them. And also assistance from abroad is welcome concerning alcohol, drugs. We need to stop them and encourage mass sports also. Bad habits, we need to curb them and spend more on sports, planting trees and taking walks. And this is about what you see. We're working on the increasing walkways so that people will be encouraged to walk and avoid taxis. It's good for human health. So that's why we're creating more walkways, we would have more hospitals. The budget currently is huge, but it's not enough. We encourage the private sector to contribute in this line. And also concerning street people, it's true. But if we work together, it's not difficult. If hundred thousand Ethiopians decide, there will not be any street boy on the street. If they would take one individual home, if hundred thousand diaspora decide, then we'll not have any child on the street. However, the problem on the street is not merely economical. One is poverty. And the second one is not having parents. And thirdly, the issue of addiction and drugs. And also some addicted people do not want to have any help or join institutions. But in collaboration with the private sector, there are places, shelters, we have built in the past one year and a half. And recently, in collaboration with foreigners, we have made an argument, agreement to increase channels. So in order to stop new people going to the streets, we need to do preventive work. That's my hope. But currently, the situation is getting worse. And this would create lawlessness and lose attention. And lastly, concerning elections. Many ideas have been raised. Our election, clearly to all that love Ethiopia and to Ethiopians, has been quite phenomenal. Has been very educational for us and the world also have learned a lesson. The Ethiopian people have proven that they are excellent teachers. I wanted to thank you earlier. The joy that I have and you have is not because that we are personally elected, but because Ethiopia has won as a nation. Most of you have not participated in elections, but the joy that I see in your heart, your joy and the way you looked at the election indicates that the victory of Ethiopia is what we desire at the end of the day. This is wonderful. The electoral board efforts must be uploaded. The attempts of the courts though need to be strengthened. There's a lot of work that needs to go into that. Because corruption is still there. It's not yet clean. We need to engage in further works of reform. Even that, the efforts that it did must be recognized. The efforts of the media must be uploaded. The work of the opposing parties must be appreciated. The opposition parties have contributed to the successful conduct of elections, winning and losing in elections, not only for us Ethiopians. Or even for developed nations, they have made, it's been difficult for them to swallow defeats. And new kind of characters emerge in the process. So we need to have a big heart in the process. But more than forty parties did a great job to ensure that our elections went peacefully and democratically. We need to appreciate that. The fear that I have and those that have not participated in the election here, I think you're lucky when you look at the situation of the people. They waited all the way to midnight. So in what manner are we supposed to serve these people? How can we remove poverty from these people, to remove people from small hats? If our people goes to such an extent to make sure, to stand in line for hours all the way to midnight. On the other hand, we have not done anything for them. If tomorrow we continue to steal these people, we'd rather die. That's very dangerous. Those that have not participated in this election, you're lucky. You know, the election at your time was not like that. But the current parliament is expected to do five, six times more. It's true, the suffering this parliament underwent for the past three years was phenomenal. It's not an ordinary parliament. It carried a lot of burden with a great sense of responsibility. Proven to be educational for politicians. He has served properly. We need to honor the parliament. And it should be seen of in an honorable manner. And it's quite experienced. And as a result of their work, corruption has decreased. And Waradask Abales must use of this rich experience. If we thank this parliament in such a manner, then the upcoming parliament responsibility is huge. Parliamentarians in Ethiopia don't have salary. Look at the situation in Kenya. It's quite different. It's like on a voluntary basis that they serve. However, but those that are elected to join the parliament now, we need to dispense our responsibility and a greater sense of responsibility. At least in the minimum, we're not supposed to steal from our people. We should not count our hours of service. If we do not look for luxuries. Ethiopians not only elect, but they can work. We see how they are planting trees. If they have convinced, they engage in acts of service. So if we work together and make sure that the country transition, so the current parliament with the experience it has. It should help the administration at various levels to ensure that prosperity is ensured in the country. That people speak freely, but also in a responsible manner. On our part, if we win the election, if that is declared by the electoral board, will not set up a government like we used to have in the past. What we want now. Able, capable people from all parties would join various sectors, administration. We can argue in politics, but when it comes to development, we need to work together. We will not say you have lost the election and come back after five years. It's true that some parties have lost their opportunity to engage in the election because of influences from other partners. They may need to wait for five more years. But those that withstood the opposition, the challenges and participated in our democratic process would be allowed to participate in the strong government that we envision to set up in September. If we say that Ethiopia has won, it does not mean that prosperity has won. Ethiopia can only win if everybody is engaged in the process. So at any level, would give room for others to join us, to work together. What we need is to see that Ethiopia prospers. So the room would be open in this regard. Every party would benefit. After five years, we engage in political arguments again. So it's a referendum, by the way, that was undertaken. The number of Ethiopians registered and the percentage that went out to vote. When we look at it percentage wise, even in developed countries, including the US. Among those eligible to vote, the Ethiopians did much better percentage wise. They went out to vote with clear voice. They said, we want peace. Stable government. We do not want a government that would be like an errand boy. We accept the referendum of the Ethiopian people. The message is loud and clear. It's not for one party, but we understand, let Ethiopia, it is rather let Ethiopia win. So Ethiopians together would set up a stronger government and ensure a prosperity. Incidentally, Ethiopia would not dismember, would not fail. All the challenges we passed through shows that we are a resilient nation that cannot break up easily. This would continue. Something that I want to ensure now, that Ethiopia loves, God loves Ethiopia and he would help us transition. We have seen that in practice. In the same line, in one heart, in unity will make our future brighter. For the work this parliament did for six years, it's quite historical. I'm very grateful and respect the work you did. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Honorable Prime Minister, for the responses and the explanation. Following that, Ms. Taeish Tesfahuneng, as the Chair of Finance Committee, will present the decision points of the community. Thank you very much, Honorable Speaker of the House. First of all, Honorable Prime Minister, Al-Raith Peace Prize winner. I would like to thank you for coming here with us to respond to our questions. Honorable Members of the House, I will present the decision as follows. Sunny twenty eight. The two thousand twenty two National Budget Proclamation Number seventeen, two thousand thirteen, for the ratification of the draft proclamation. Introduction: The fifth round HPR six zero budget period ordinary session held for the fifth time, fifteenth time on the July sixteen, two thousand twenty one. The federal government prepared the draft proclamation for the year two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty two and submitted the same to the Permanent Committee of Revenue, Budget and Finance. The Permanent Committee, according to the revised procedure and Members' Code of Conduct Number six, two thousand eight, Article one hundred seventy two, Subarticle two, and Articles sixty nine, Subarticle one, two, Subarticle nine, reviewed and prepared a report and decision based on the principles of reviewing budget. reviewed and prepared a report and decision based on the principles of reviewing budget. And it shall as well be presented as follows. Part One, Report. One, Major Activities Conducted During the Review of the Draft Budget Proclamation. One point one. On July nineteen, two thousand twenty-one, the Permanent Committee on Its Own conducted a detailed discussion on the draft proclamation and identified the questions that should be presented to the Department Heads. One point two. The Permanent Committee on the explanatory meeting held on twenty-sixth July, two thousand twenty-one, communicated with the heads of Ministry of Finance. The explanatory bodies gave explanation to the comments and questions raised. And the minute of the discussion is attached. One point three. Believing that the participation of the public is paramount, the Permanent Committee organized a public discussion. In order to make the discussion fruitful, the Ethiopian Broadcasting Authority, EBC, announced a public discussion. Moreover, federal government budget offices, ten regional states, Adisaba City Administration, Dredwa Administration, universities, vocational and community association, sectoral associations, ETC members received an invitation to participate. The draft budget document is made accessible to the public on the thirties of July to twenty twenty-one. Many comments were given during the discussion and explanations are given by the explanatory bodies. The minute is attached. But panelists to the explanatory meeting, Honorable Wazim Noah Javier Albi, Honorable Dr. Yopta Kalin, Ministry Deputy Minister or Ministry of Finance, Mr. Tafari Damaka, Ministry of Finance, Mr. Ginsia Dagafa, Ministry of Finance Physical Policy Director and Director, Mr. Talan Worldi, Ministry of Finance Budget Affairs Directorate, Mr. Masgabu Amaha, Ministry of Finance Consultant. Three major points identified during the review. One, the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two draft budget preparation took into consideration several factors and the federal government went through the necessary procedures and depending on the program budget system reliant on achievements. Two, the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two draft budget focused on improving collection of national resources and allocating the resources to priority budget areas. The budget is prepared following saving and the country's Javier's macroeconomic fiscal framework. Three, the provision for regional governments and Dredwa Administration is approved by the House of Federation and is allocated according to the same calculation for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two draft budget. And additional budget has comparatively eighty-five point six six billion or eighteen percent increment. And out of the total budget, five hundred sixty-one point seven billion per expenditure. The amount allocated for the expenditure of the federal government is one hundred sixty-two point one seven or twenty-nine percent. Capital expenditure, one hundred eighty-three billion for national and regional states, Dredwa Administration and Adisaba City Administration, support budget of two hundred three point nine five billion. And money for the implementation of sustainable development goals is allocated with twelve billion per. Out of the budget, the majority of support budget and the largest secondary level capital expenditure budget is allocated to regional governments. Five, out of the total budget of two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, the total federal government ordinary capital expenditure in total is allocated with three hundred forty-five point seven to billion per. And according to the ten years prospective prosperity plans, poverty-focused programs, meaning education, road, agriculture, water, health, urban food security and developmental safety need and are given priority. Moreover, manufacturing industrial development and export and urban development sectors that are paramount to economic transformation and ensuring sustainable development are allocated with large amount of budget. Six, capital expenditures give priority to existing projects planned in two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one and to irrigation projects. Seven, the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two budget year expenditure cover is expected to be collected from domestic sources of finance and foreign donors. Contribution amounting to four hundred thirty-five point nine five billion. Out of this, three hundred sixty-nine point one billion from domestic sources. Direct budget from basic support services, coverage per thirty-eight point seven five billion and from project support, twenty-eight point zero six billion per shall be collected and the expense shall be covered from this. Eight, the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two draft budget deficit, meaning one hundred twenty-five point one billion, shall be collected and covered directly from their budget support from project loan. One, twenty-five point five three billion from project loan, thirty-one point three six billion from domestic loan, sixty-eight point eight six billion. And total budget deficit from the total GDP is two point six seven percent. And out of this, domestic loan is one point four six and it shall be in line with the fiscal policy. And the fact that it might put pressure on the cost of goods is identified.
Two thousand fourteen budget year. The preparation of the draft has taken into consideration the two thousand thirteen implementation of the budget for the year two thousand twenty thirteen. And it's based on fiscal policy. I'm also looking into our financial capacity that we have on the ground. And also goes the direction of self-sufficiency, ensuring that people benefit from the process and emphasized on poverty reduction. And for this program budget and the budget for regional states and also for Dredwa Administration. Support was in line with the formula done by the House of Federation. And it's supposed to ensure the prosperity plan and achieve budgets therein. The recent Federal General Audit Report indicated that failures to observe financial administration, administrative laws and procedures happened, took place on the part of various offices. Work need to be done that will not repeat in this budget year, that the Auditor General and also the Standing Committee, their reports, the implementation need to, the recommendations need to be implemented. And the budgets need to be used in a frugal manner. And a strong works of monitoring follow-up is expected. So that we will be disciplined follow-up of financial administration system. In case that that's not the case, as per the new amended proclamation nine seventeen, as per the mandate given, the Ministry of Finance measures need to be done. In case this will not succeed, the Prime Minister to take action against those failures. And also the monitoring control work of the parliament needs to be strengthened. We know that the greatest source of revenue is tax and at the moment in order to collect tax, we need to deal with the problems and also address issues among taxpayers concerning problems of good governance and come up with the solutions and also modernize the system of tax collections. And also work in the attitude of the people that they would consider tax evasion shameful and that they recognize that there are national duty to pay tax and extensive awareness creating forums need to be done. So the plan is to collect tax of per three hundred sixty-nine billion. So a lot of work needs to go into that. The Standing Committee is in agreement that the budget for the year two thousand fourteen should stand at per five hundred sixty-one point seven billion. Accordingly, with us submit the report and recommendations on the two thousand fourteen budget. We request the Honorable Parliament, the House, to review and approve the budget. Mr. Standing Committee on Revenues, Budget and Finance. Thank you. Thank you so much, Honorable Wazir Roy Ines. Any questions on the recommendations or opinions? If not, those in approval over the draft budget, federal budget proclamation, proclamation one thousand number stated, those who are in approval. Thank you. Those who are against its approval, abstainers? None? So the federal government two thousand fourteen draft proclamation number stated is unanimously approved. Meeting adjourned.